Okay, good evening all. We're going to open our meeting. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Town of East Bridgewater Planning Board. It's Monday evening, May 1st, 2023, 7:00 PM. Currently present for the board, regular members Sherri Bates, John Lawler, Christine Hanley, Kevin Riley, myself, Roy Gardner, also present is our senior clerk Candy Boyle from the Planning Building Department office. I'm going to open the meeting by clarifying a couple of things that are pretty important here. We have an upcoming election in like a week, Saturday I believe, if my recollection is In part due to that election and several other things, three of our members, the two of whom are currently with us and a third who is not with us tonight, will not be members after that election. That's going to impact some of the work we do tonight, but we'll get to that later. I do want to express sincere thanks from the Town of East Bridgewater, from myself as chairman of the board and from the remainder of the board members, for those three members who aren't going to be with us as planning board members after this town election. Those are Christine Hanley, who's here with us tonight, Edward O'Leary, who's not here tonight, and Rob Ken, who, due to personal reasons, has recently submitted his resignation and will not be a member coming up in the upcoming weeks. Two of our new members, I should clarify, two participants who will be our new members are actually here in the room with us tonight. I welcome them again at our meeting tonight, and will welcome you officially at our next meeting when you will be official members since you're unopposed on our ballot. I do appreciate your willingness to run as members of the planning board, so given that, we'll move on to our next business, which is the approval of the minutes, acceptance of the minutes of Monday, March 20th, 2023. To members of the board, what's your pleasure in those minutes?
To approve the minutes of the meeting of March 23rd, waive formal reading and approve in the form presented.
Second.
So that's a motion Riley, second lawyer, Lawler. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? We'll show that as unanimous vote of all five regular members present in voting. Second item on the agenda is a zoning map change proposed for an area that roughly encompasses a portion of North Central Street and a portion of West Union Street. We're going to try and do our best with technology, which isn't the technology I practice with, Ryan's not still here in the room, right?
No.
Like magic. Okay, so what we have up on the screen here right now is we have what's basically the The brown district in the center is R3. Slightly different color brown district at the top, under where it says B3 is actually B3 District. That's the current Smith's Function House that's on Central Street at the intersection with Cross Street. So the plan that's being proposed by the planning board will be to... The plan will be to take those areas that are hashed diagonally in red and integrate those into the existing R3 District, which will include everything from the center line of Central Street back to the existing R3 District, to the westerly boundary of the Smith property on North Central Street, and will add a portion... It will add a triangular shape to the westerly side, all the way up to Ellis Lane and to West Union Street, to the existing R3 District. Now, the planning rationale behind that is that there's a large portion of land within the existing R3 District that can be developed as R3 multifamily zoning. Its access is off-frontage, that's roughly opposite Ellis Lane on West Union Street. The idea would be is the planning board would prefer not to see the first five or six lots on that road entering that area to be single-family homes, going then into a multifamily district. We'd like to see the entire district, starting at West Union Street, all the way down into the existing R3 District, to all be R3. So our proposal is to expand the R3 District by adding those two sections that are shown in the red hash and make that all a single, about 40% larger R3 District. Of the existing houses that are currently in the yellow, which is an R1 Zone, over 10 of those houses are already multifamily use. They're large, single-family homes along both North Central Street, and there's, I think, two on Union Street that already have multifamily uses within them. So the way this zoning change would work is all those underlying houses that are in there that are currently R1 would remain grandfathered and protected under zoning. There could potentially be some combination of those lots and a new construction, a reconstruction of multifamily housing in those two locations. So given that, I'll... So that's the assessors map that shows all of the lots that are within those areas. The northerly section that includes the Smith property shows all the individual lots with their addresses on North Central Street. The lower section here on the left-hand side, as you see, there's, it only adds, I believe, four existing house lots into the R3 District. All of the other land to the rear of that is undeveloped at this time, and is abutting the existing R3 District. Two of those four houses on West Union Street, I believe, are already multifamily uses, over single-family as they currently exist. So given that, I'll ask that any members of the board have any questions on... By the way, when this was proposed before the planning board, about six weeks ago, we had a unanimous vote from the planning board of six in favor and none opposed to proceed with this rezoning. This public hearing is to make an official recommendation to town meeting for the town meeting vote that will come up. If everything goes according to plan, I believe it's going to be next Monday night that this will come up on the town meeting agenda. In addition to this, another important thing to point out is that based on changes in the state zoning bylaw that were adopted at the beginning of the year, or end of 2022, to make this change, because this is a change from a single-family to a higher-density multifamily, the requirement for town meeting is now a 50% vote, a majority vote. It no longer requires a two-thirds vote for approval. So given that, I'll go back to any members of the board who have any questions, comments?
Just out of curiosity, what would it add for, you think, number of units, number of apartments, or whatever it's going to get broken down into?
In terms of potential new units in the area that's south of West Union to the west of that undeveloped area?
Yeah.
There's already potential for some 15 to 20 units within the existing R3. It would add, we believe, again, a couple of other variables here, which are obviously Title V septic systems and the space required for the actual buildings themselves, as well as parking, but it would probably add over and above the existing potential, some, another 10 to 15 units. Up in the area of Smith's, the undeveloped portion of the Smith property, as well as renovating the existing function hall, we expect could potentially add somewhere between 10 and 12 units.
Okay.
What would happen if some of the other land got redeveloped that has existing buildings on them, about half of those single-family? It's really hard to project because that's really a market-driven functionality. I wouldn't expect it in the current market. We'd see any changes there, at least in the near term. Anyone else on the board? Anyone here in the room have any questions they'd like to ask or comments they'd like to make on the proposed zoning change?
So I have a question. So the difference between R1 and R3 is the R3 can have multifamily homes?
That's correct.
That's it?
Yeah, each unit in the multifamily requires slightly more square foot area in the lot, so I believe we could go up to as many as six units, which would require a little over an acre of land for a six-unit building. But it would allow anything from two- and three-unit townhouses all the way up to six-unit buildings. The best I can describe in terms of context within East Bridgewater is we could potentially end up with some buildings like we see down at Pompanho Pines on Route 106. We don't have any, and R3 doesn't allow, but we don't have any of those extremely high-density districts like we've seen in some other towns, although I acknowledge that's coming up at next town meeting, not this current one, but next town meeting, because there's other changes in state laws that are going to mandate we do that. This one is strictly to stay within the context of a Town of East Bridgewater existing R3 District.
Some of those areas are so wet and so much traffic now.
Well, they're still going to have to pass Title V requirements and border health requirements for septic system and water capabilities, water availability. They'll also have to pass all other requirements for the Stormwater Management Act, as well as all the permits required under the conservation, under the Wetlands Protection Act, so... This particular area has basically no wetlands within it. The existing R3 District backs up to the river, but that's already zoned R3. The area that we're planning on adding to R3 basically is all upland, and that's not to say it would perk in Title V. That's a different issue that's outside that planning board purview, but...
So the area that you're actually talking about, that's like behind the old Shaw's Warehouse, right? Is that the area that you mean?
No, it's actually...
If you went down Laurel Street and where Shaw's Warehouse is, is that the tractor land you mean from West Union down to there?
It goes up to a boat, the Shaw's Warehouse boundary, yes.
Okay.
Yes. But it's west, it's northwest of that. So it's west of the river, northerly toward West Union Street. Anybody else on the board, anybody else here in the room? So because I didn't when I started this, but I will clarify, this is actually a public hearing that's being held under Master General Law Chapter 48, Section 5, where you discuss and make a recommendation to annual town meeting regarding the proposed zoning change that we've been discussing. When we do close the public hearing, the board will make a vote on the record to make a recommendation to town meeting. We all sat there, and at this point, I guess we could take a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
So that's a motion Lawler, do we have a second?
Second.
That's a motion Lawler, second Bates, to close the public hearing. We'll call a closure time at 7:16 PM. All those in favor of the motion to close the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as unanimous vote of all five regular members present in voting, five in favor and none opposed. So I think that the next item that we should probably go ahead and do is make a recommendation, or put a motion on the table to make a recommendation to annual town meeting, as to what we're going to recommend in terms of this zoning change. So I'll make a motion that we recommend that this zoning change be adopted as it meets several requirements, or let's say several recommendations at the state level that the town needs to do more to add additional multifamily housing, and that the two districts that would be added here would in fact be adding multifamily housing zone to existing districts, which already have multiple locations with multifamily zones. Also would make an integrated multifamily zone off of West Union Street, where right now it's split between R1 and R3. It would also allow a reasonable reuse of the Smith property, which already has a large building on it, which the Smith brothers have petitioned the town to allow a zoning change since in the last 18 months. It's become clear to them that using that as a function hall is not financially viable in today's economic environment, so... So that's a motion that I'll make to propose adoption of this article at annual town meeting. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
So that's a motion Gardner, second lawyer, Lawler. Further discussion on the motion? There are no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
So do I read that as four in favor, one opposed, to make a recommendation to town meeting to adopt the zoning article as presented here? So we'll show that as four in favor, one opposed. Member Kevin Riley voting in opposition. Okay. All right, next item on the agenda, and this is going to stumble across our membership issue here. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Hickory Hill Development, which is property in a residential property, Residence 2 Zone property in the north side of Central Street. They're proposing a 20-lot, single-family residential subdivision. Given the fact that three of our existing, current regular board members can't be available after the election time, and given the fact that this would require for approval, a vote of four members in the affirmative of this board, we are in mutual agreement with the applicant for the Hickory Hill Development that we're going to simply open the public hearing, take no testimony, and continue the public hearing to a time and date that we're going to determine as part of our discussion coming up. So the thought being that we want to continue this public hearing until our first meeting in June, since our next meeting in May, we're going to have two new members of which we need to do some work with before we're ready, I think, to go to a public hearing status. Additionally, one of our existing members can't make the second meeting this month. So I'm going to ask Candy to give me the actual date of our first meeting in June.
I'll get back to you.
June 5, right? It's June 5? Okay, I'm going to read the actual notice of public hearing. Then we're going to officially open the hearing and then continue that hearing without any testimony being taken, but this is the East Bridgewater Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing. The planning board of the Town of East Bridgewater will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 1st, 2023, at 7:15 PM in the Town Office Building, 175 Central Street, in the large second-floor conference room. The purpose of the hearing will be to review a Form B definitive subdivision application plan submitted by PMP Consulting Incorporated on behalf of its client, Hickory Hill Development, also the owner of Wreckit. The applicant is proposing a 20-lot, single-family residential subdivision. The subject property is located on the north side of Central Street and consists of approximately 16.8 plus or minus acres. Zoning classification is Residence 2, R2. Lots are shown on the East Bridgewater Census Map, 95 plots, 1584, 1601, and 1616. The planning board is required by the East Bridgewater Subdivision Rules and Regulations and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81-T, and the Town of East Bridgewater Bylaws, Part 8, Construction Phase Stormwater Management and Soil Erosion Control. Bylaw seeks public input relative to this proposed subdivision. Plans are on file with the Planning Building Department. It can be reviewed between the hours of 8:30 PM and 4:30 PM, Monday through Thursday, and Friday, 8:30 AM to 12 noon. Given that public hearing notice, at this point, I'll declare the hearing open. It's 7:22 PM. I'll also now make a motion that we continue all public input and testimony on the subdivision until Monday evening, June 5th, at 7:15 PM.
Second.
So that's a motion Gardner, second Riley. Any further discussion on the motion? And again, the primary reason we're doing that is we're going to have a different membership starting at our next meeting. Secondary part of that is that the applicant is still finalizing some of the drainage calculations that we're going to need to review. So again, the hearing will be continued on June 5th. That's our first meeting, the first Monday in June, at 7:15 PM. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And we'll show that as unanimous vote of all five regular members present in voting. Thank you all. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, which I touched very lightly on a few minutes ago, we're in the midst of working on what the state refers to as the MBTA Community Zoning Project. That project is a result, is a direct result of a major change in the State Zoning Act, which requires that the town rezone one or more areas. In our town, it looks like two areas to be what I'll call very high-density multifamily The definition we've received from the state on what that extrapolates to in numbers is 15 units per acre for up to 750 units. So right now, we've got a temporary rough-out. We're working with OCPC, Old Colony Planning Council, out of Brockton, of which we're a member, on two districts within the town that could potentially meet the requirements under the state law as it's currently written. Those areas would be the area north side of town from Route 18 back to Winter Street to the Whitman Line down to about two-thirds of the way to Highland Street. That's roughly a 60 to 70-acre parcel of land. That land will have municipal storage available very shortly, since we've received approval at both the municipal level with the city of Brockton, with an intermunicipal agreement for city storage to come into West Bridgewater for that parcel of land. The second parcel we're looking at is a parcel of land in the downtown area, which includes the old engineering site. Basically, the land, we'll say, west of Spring Street into the downtown area up to Cook Street. We don't have finalized maps of that available, but that zoning map change wouldn't happen until annual town meeting in 2024. So there will be a bunch of public hearings prior to that, laying out what that map is going to look like. Current information we've received from both the state, the state attorney general's office, as well as Mass Housing, is that this change is not optional. I'm not going to try and discuss what that means, that's what they've told us. We haven't had further discussions as to what they mean by "it's not optional," since it needs to be adopted at town meeting to be changed, so we'll leave that alone until we get further direction from the state, but those are the areas that we're currently looking at. We're going to be posting some maps online, probably within the next month or two, when we get some feedback from the Old Colony Planning Council. Those areas would probably put in place what we refer to as a high-density overlay district, which would leave the underlying zoning untouched with an overlay district on top of it, which would allow the high-density zoning. Current state law says we have to be able to support, without changing that zoning and modifying that zoning, up to 500 high-density units. There's some further discussion about how that works, but my thought from what we've been seeing with some other towns that are doing this with overlay districts is that when the town, if the town gets to a point where it hits that minimum required number under the State Zoning Act, which is just over 500 units, it's actually 10% of the existing housing units in the town, right now, that's just a little bit over 500, since we have a little over 5,000 housing units in the Town of East Bridgewater, that we could suspend that overlay zoning district until such time as they change the algorithm that would allow for the housing, so... Probably almost every meeting, we'll have something to say about the MBTA Community Zoning Project. We'll keep everyone updated to the best we can. We'll keep information posted through the links in the town clerk's office as we move forward. I'll ask if any members of the board have any questions at this point on that. I wish we had more information at the state level, as well as guidance. The guidance seems to keep changing, but we're working on that with Old Colony Planning Council, and we'll keep everyone updated as we get more information. Okay, given that, we're going to move on Sully's Lane Road Bond. We've determined that the Town of East Bridgewater is holding some roughly $50,000 in Sully's Lane Road Bond. My recommendation is we go back to the applicant on Sully's Lane and tell him that if he does the work to finish the roads on Sully's Lane, which are not finished at this point, that the town will make sure that the funds provided, the work is done to meet standard requirements and specifications from our reviewing engineer, that we would be more than willing to release that bond amount to actually pay the cost of doing that work, because that's what the bond is being held for. My understanding is the applicant... My understanding is the applicant currently doesn't have cash on hand to pay the, the companies that would be doing the final base coat, or finish coat, rather, of the roads. So I'm gonna make a motion that we notify the applicant on, on Sully's Lane that, that we're more than willing to release road bond amount, to pay to, pay for work that is actually done and confirmed to be done to the requirements of the subdivision rules and regulations by our consulting engineer. So can we get a second to that motion?
Second the motion for discussion. Do we have a sense of what the cost of that would be, Roy?
Uh, if it's done...
Would the $50,000 cover it?
If, if it's done by the applicant, it, it appears to be less than the 50,000. If we were to have to seize the bond and, and the town would have to pay for that, we wouldn't have enough to do that, because we'd have to go out to bid, and it would have to go out under the open, open bidding laws, I understand it. As a municipality, there's some requirements as to how that works, and so it's, it's clearly in our best interest to have the, the applicant do the work and then release the bond funds to the applicant after it's confirmed by our consultant that the work's been done. Any, any additional questions on that?
No.
So all those in favor of the motion to, to write a letter back to the, to the applicant for Sully, Sully's Lane and let him know that we're willing to release the, the bond amount to, to potentially pay the, the labor and materials costs to do the work, provided that work is done according to our rules and regulations. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as five in favor and none opposed. That's unanimous vote of all members present in voting. Next item is, is Three Daisy Lane. The owner of the lot at Three Daisy Lane has, has notified that the, the planning board, that they're a little bit confused as to how the detention basin that's approximately 50% on their lot and 50% on the adjacent lot, which I believe is Five Daisy Lane, seems to be operating, so. We have confirmed by both the engineer who's working for the developer, as well as the town's consultant, that apparently the high groundwater mark, in terms of the wetlands to the rear, which would be to the east of Daisy Lane, was missed during the original engineering by, let's just say, the original, the applicant's original engineer. So what's been happening this spring was that water's actually been flowing from the wetlands into the detention basin, as opposed to the...
Appears to be more of a retention basin.
Yeah. I was actually there the other day after the, not, not the rain last night, but several days ago, when we had some rain for significant amount of rain, but the water was clearly flowing into the basin. I believe it's Home Green Engineering, who's now working with the applicant on that, was actually present, measuring elevations while I was there. The gentleman that was doing the actual measurement is, is not an engineer, but he did acknowledge pretty clearly that the water is flowing into the basin instead of out of the basin. So we don't have the engineering fix for that yet, although several different things were discussed generally, but I, I, I don't wanna bias what the fix will be, but it looks like the basin is gonna have to be raised a little bit to get the bottom of the basin above the, the wetlands level.
Have they been in touch, do we know, with the homeowner? Because I know that the homeowner's original communication basically was sort of like, "nobody's helping me," and so forth.
We have had a brief discussion with the homeowner and, and told him it's on our radar, we know it needs to be fixed.
Okay.
But we're not sure how that gets fixed. Other than that, I, I don't think there's much we can add to it at this point. It's in the process of being worked on. Whatever they come up with as an engineering fix, we'll have to go back to, to our consultant to, to make sure that they're in, in concurrence with, with whatever happens there. There, there's been some, next item on our agenda is, is Pierce Path, that's off of Bridge Street. My view of that, there's, there's no issues on Pierce Path that belong to the planning board right now. And Abada there, who is very unhappy that we approved that subdivision to begin with, because it takes away the beautiful view of the field, we can't do anything about that from a planning board standpoint. The law is clear that if, if an applicant meets all of the requirements under the subdivision rules and regulations, then, then we have to approve the subdivision. It's the same Abada who's ongoing with issues. Those issues are being handled right now by the, the building inspector slash zoning enforcement officer, and for now, we'll leave it at that until he comes back and says we need to do anything, but up until now, there's nothing the planning board can do about, about any of the issues that are there. 47 West Union Street Site Plan Approval. The zoning enforcement officer has, has received several complaints and has raised an issue about whether or not that the current applicant is, is maintaining the requirement for the, for the improvements to the site, as well as the maximum number of cars to be available on the site. I do note that the, the applicant, the landowner, and I believe the applicant is here with us tonight.
Yep.
So is there anything you wanna add to...
It's work in progress. You know, we just got through winter. I know it wasn't a bad winter, but he's been busy with other projects, so it is work in progress, as far as, you know, the building in rehab, and the property being, you know, upgraded, beautified, and, you know, plantings or whatever else.
So, so one of the things we've noticed at least three times in the last month...
Yep.
Is that there's more unregistered cars on that site than a lot is allowed under the special permit?
Right. Well, he's not doing, it's not open, it's not open...
Doesn't matter. You cannot have more unregistered cars parked on that site than is allowed under the special permit at any time.
Okay.
So we need to get that fixed right away. That's a, that's a major zoning problem.
It's, it's only one car. So it's not any more than the one car that's there.
Well, yeah, but what's that? That's a 25% violation, because what's allowed?
Well, he's allowed to have three unregistered and then two registered on the, on the lot.
One.
Is it?
One.
One registered?
One owner's car, three unregistered, three for sale.
There's three unregistered, four unregistered, but there's no owner's car on, on the property as of yet, so it's four cars realistically.
Three unregistered cars is what the permit allows. That's a zoning issue, so let's keep it there and make sure it never exceeds that, okay? We're getting to the, the point where the weather shouldn't be impacting the, the rest of the improvements on the site, so we need to make sure that that gets done as part of the, as part of the special permit process.
Yeah, I mean, he's working on it, and he's doing the best he can.
So the other concerns that I would raise, one would be the, where cars are being parked is not what was approved. And I think we went through some fairly significant detail about what's gonna happen to that building, and I just want an idea of what, based on what's there now...
Yep.
What the end product is going to be, because we have now a red roof, we have yellow and blue paint on the side, we have a shingled area with a new door, mixed in with metal facing on the front of the building.
Yes.
Not exactly what, what one would've thought was a complete renovation of the exterior of the building.
No, it's not completed.
What's the intention?
The intention is, well...
When it's complete, what's it gonna look like? What's going to be done?
Well, it's gonna be fully painted. I mean, I, I spoke to him about the color. I told, I told him use a solid color, not two-tone, you know, the blue and yellow, so it's gonna, I guess it's gonna be all blue. The front is gonna get painted, as you probably saw, it's been, a door, a couple of windows been installed with a door and siding, so that's gonna get painted.
So are we looking at the continuation of what's in the front? In other words, the shingles and...
No, no, because the rest of the building is metal corrugated steel.
Yep.
So that's why you saw that patch where the window is, where the corrugated steel, just to kind of match what's the exterior of it now. That's all.
The, the front has, the front has a door cut in with wooden shingles around it...
Yes, yep.
With metal around that.
The metal is existing.
So?
So what's wrong with that? I mean, it, it used, it's better than what used to be there. There used to be a, a T, T-111 siding that was peeling and everything else, I mean, it's... Does it, the, the front have to be the same as the sides? I mean...
If you wanna make the front wood shingles, fine.
It is, yeah.
Consistent wood shingles, not half and half, not two-thirds, one-third, all wood It's my understanding there was gonna be a new roof on the building.
Nobody said anything about a roof. It's the roof that's there, it's a steel buil, it's a steel roof.
Okay, well, it doesn't need to be painted red, in my humble opinion.
What, what's wrong with red?
Is that permit in place now?
I'm sorry?
Is the occupancy permit and the business permit, is that in place now?
No.
Is that active? Okay.
No.
What about holding it back until it, it passes muster?
Well, it's just saying we gotta have certain colors on the building, I mean, where's the, where's the...
I don't thi, I don't think we're weird about certain colors, but we don't wanna have...
It's called a red roof.
We don't wanna have four different colors.
Nobody said there's gonna be a red, uh, uh, I'm not gonna redo roof, but steel roof.
It wasn't red when we were doing the permit.
No, it was rusty. It was rusty, you're right. You want a rusty roof, or is it a, is it bad?
Probably the rusty would look better than the red, quite frankly.
Okay, but nobody says we can't paint whatever color we want. I, I understand what you're saying.
You can paint it any color you want, but we wanna see it one color. All right? One color.
One color of what? The whole building?
Whatever color you wanna choose. You pick the color.
Why does the roof have to be the same color as the, the side of the building?
You want a special permit for that site or not? Answer is yes or no?
Yes, yeah, but I...
All right, thank you. That's, that's the, that's the answer. Thank you. One color. All right, we, we have a road bond estimate for...
Just one other thing, if, if the, if the vehicles cannot be moved to an impervious surface on the lot now, I would suggest that they be moved off until that can be done. Because that was also the requirement, that they be parked on an impervious surface, which would be along the back area. And I think, based on what's there now, I see tree stumps, I see cut logs, I see all sorts of things. So the concern was, and the discussion was, not parking vehicles on grass, which is exactly what's happened, so.
Well, we were gonna put down stone, that's in previous, that's what, how, when I, we, we proposed it, I proposed it with crushed stone.
In addition, six, the applicant shall be entitled to park four vehicles, three for display, and to be parked on a paved or other impervious surface along the rear lot line of the property, parallel to West Union Street. That's the spec, that's the decision of the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda, the covenant for Tower Heights, Phase 5. We've got a road bond estimate that was done based on the, the standard road bond estimating forms that we've used. That road bond estimate was actually prepared by PMP. I did look at it. I think it pretty much matches up what we've used in the past, in, in terms of numbers, contingencies, percentages, and so on and so forth. I'm at a bit of a loss here, because although that's on our agenda, I don't see a copy of that document here on the table.
It was voted up to the teams.
Which we can't get to right now because of the problems we're having with our...
Want a copy?
If, if I could.
Absolutely.
Just for the record, could you say who you are, Patrick?
Patrick Arer from PMP Consulting, Inc.
I apologize, I, I spent the better part of a day and a half going over the technology to make sure everything was working okay, and a little bit before the meeting, we realized for whatever reason, the technology's not working today, so. So the, the total road bond estimate for the, for the lots that are gonna go in, what's referred to as covenant, oh, Tower Heights, Phase 5, and which are currently locked in a covenant prior to lot release, the, the amount is $242,900. So for, for just clarification for everyone that, that's, that's either here in the room or, or listening on TV, the, the standard procedure for the, the road bond estimates for the Town of East Bridgewater is that we're required to use numbers that will reflect what the town would have to pay if we had to take over and finish the roadwork. That's where those numbers come from, and they come out of a standard form that we've been using for probably three decades, and it gets updated every couple of years with an increase in the cost of the materials. The basic estimate is, is contingent on the fact that the base road code is down, base pavement is down, such that the fire department in the Town of East Bridgewater is satisfied that it'll be safe to get to those buildings if they have to in case of emergency, because once we start releasing those lots, single-family homes can be built on those lots and they can be sold to the general public, which means we have to be able to safely get to those houses with the, with the emergency equipment. So again, that road bond amount in total is $242,900. So I would move at this point in time that we set the road bond to, to that amount, and that we will agree to release all lots within Phase 5 of that subdivision upon that road bond being placed in, in one of two forms, and, and that form is in, in cash with the town treasurer, or in the form of a tri-party agreement with an accepted bank, such that the, the three parties of the signatories to the town, or to the tri-party agreement would be the developer, the Town of East Bridgewater, and the bank that's holding the third-party agreement. So those are the, the two methodologies the town council has advised us we can accept these days. So I'll, I'll leave it up to you, Patrick, if you have any feedback or comments.
No, um, at, at this point, I believe the applicant, Mr. Lopez, is only looking to get lots four and five released, and allow the board to hold lots one, two, and three under covenant. That's all he's looking to get released at this point, is just two of the five lots.
So do we know what percentage of that road bond amount he's willing to place to...
That I do not. That I do not. I was here mainly ask que, answer questions about the bond itself.
Okay, so another, another piece of information here is the, the town has been advised by town council since roughly 2008, 2009, maybe starting in seven, eight, through early nine, that, that the town can't accept as potential surety lots that we haven't released from covenant. Now, the rationale behind that is that the value of those lots can be dramatically different from, from one year to the next, as we know, from '67 to '69, from '87 to '89, and from 2007 to 2009. So, so the problem we get into, if, if we don't have an actual cash bond to finish the amount of roadway that would cover the, the lots that we'd be releasing, is that would basically make the Town of East Bridgewater real estate salespeople to see how much money we can get for those additional lots.
Yeah, no, no, understood.
Okay. So if you wanna come up with a number that, that applicant is willing to post to get those first couple of lots, please feel free to, feel to, feel to bring that back to us. If he wants to communicate with me, I can communicate with one or two other members of the board to see if, what would be satisfied with.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely.
The other piece of this, as described earlier, is the, the board is gonna have some significant changes in the next couple of weeks. So, as I've said many, many times in the past, I, I'm one voting member here, there's potentially seven of us. Hopefully, there will be seven of us shortly after the election. I would like to say, especially for those that are, that are watching this on, on live television and who may watch it on, on replay, that there is gonna be an open slot on the planning board due to the resignation of Rob Ken. We were unable to, due to the timing, to get that slot on the ballot. So the way that has to be filled is, is the selectmen in the, in the planning board will be soliciting applications for an appointment, which would fill that slot until our next annual town election after this one, which would be, so that the slot would be filled for approximately one year with an appointee at a joint meeting of the selectmen and the planning board. So my suggestion would be if, if anyone out there is interested in a seat on the planning board for one year to quote, "try it out" if you want, I would suggest you think about what the planning board does and the amount of work that it takes to do that, but if you're interested, submit a letter to the selectman's office. The selectman will, will copy us on that letter. At some point in time, the selectmen and the planning board will hold a joint meeting, probably four to six weeks from now, give or take, depending on the application process and, and who applies to, to fill that vacant seat. So that's all part of where we're gonna be going in the future. Again, in fairness to, to Mr. Lopez... Again, in fairness to Mr. Lopez, who's the applicant here, and other applicants, we want to make sure that when we start acting on those proposals before us, we have seven members sitting. This is the first time in the history of me being on the board, which is four decades plus, where we're going to have three new members in the same year, so that there's going to be a bit of a, I don't want to say turmoil, but there's going to be a bit of learning and growing with the board for the next couple of months, but we'll do our best to make that as painless as possible. So I don't have anything else to say. If you have anything else, Patrick, you want to...
No, no, I mean, I think it's pretty cut and dried. You've accepted the bond amount, and, you know, as I said, I'll talk to Mike tomorrow, and we'll get in touch with you and let you know what we want to do, okay?
Okay. Anyone else on the board have any comments, questions? Again, I want to offer my heartfelt thanks to Christine Hanley, who's here tonight, which is her last official meeting, because she is not running for reelection on the upcoming ballot. We do appreciate the work that you've given us, Christine.
Thank you for having me here.
We hope that all of your personal things, which I know have increased the intensity of your personal life work in your favor in the long term, so...
Thank you.
And everyone else, we're looking forward to our next meeting, so the other four of us that are here tonight, hopefully, will be here at our next meeting, and we'll move forward, and we'll have two new members who are here tonight with us, and early welcome aboard, and we'll give you the official welcome aboard at our next meeting. And I think that's all I have for tonight. That's all that's on our agenda, as best I can tell, so if anyone else has anything, otherwise I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So one, just one point. If Eddie, this is going to be Eddie's last night, and we've got cookies. If he leaves again next week, can we, you think we can do this again? As a personal favor. Thank you all. It was nice working with you all. I hope things work out.
Well, you're not going anywhere, right?
Not that I know of. Do I look sick to you?
All right, then I'll make a motion to adjourn, and we'll call that motion to adjourn being made at 7:52 PM.
Second.
We have a second law, a motion gotten, a second law to adjourn at 7:52 PM. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as five in favor and none opposed, and thank you all.